If we can have y'all's attention, we're gonna have to get started. And we have to run, most part, just like the city commissioners meeting, so we have to call the meeting to order. At this time, we're calling the meeting to order.
(inaudible) Blessed be, Father, we ask continually for your blessing upon the city of Hazard that we might prosper, we might grow, we might better serve our citizens, Father. Be with every city employees, with our city fathers, as we go through this. We pray that you bless this meeting tonight, that what comes out of it will come to fruition, and, Father, that we can do great things for our citizens and for our community. We ask all this in the name of your mercy, Father, Jesus. Amen.
Roll call, Commissioner Till?
Here.
Commissioner Dyson?
Here.
Commissioner Miss?
Here.
Commissioner Bus?
Here.
Mayor Molly?
Here.
The meeting is now a special call meeting. For the purpose of the meeting is to conduct a public listening session. We're gonna introduce the Regis City team here. I'll let them give up the pads at the bottom. Let them get up there and give that. I need to touch them.
We will.
The purpose of this is, we received a strategic planning grant. We've worked on this for several years.
We can't hear you back here, because we're gonna have to go to the microphone.
What if I yell a little bit loud?
Okay, you can try that.
Is that our president?
I don't know what you're, whoa, 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 like you're trying to throw around.
So, we received a strategic planning grant. We've been working with the Legis Cities. They've been speaking with lots of vendor groups in the community. They came in and spoke with all the city hall staff, all the city departments that spoke with them. And we opened this up to the community. Earlier today, I know they've had trouble before this, but just prior to you folks coming in, they sat down with the high school students and got their ideas, what they want to see for the city, how they want to see things move, change, and grow. But as we conduct this session, you got the maps there, and just from my sneaking in and watching them a little earlier, they sat the kids down, they said, "Where do you want things? Help us to picture, get a picture of what you want to see in the future. Where do we need to improve at? What do we need to improve?" So, we're taking your input and gearing in. They'll come back with a nice report. We'll sit down, we'll go over there and report with them to see what's feasible for us, what we need to do, what we want to do, things to make our city go. And you all have to stake in this. Every person that gives some input is a stakeholder in this. Can we do every project? I would love to say we could, but unless somebody wins that $500 million power bottle...
If I do, it's not.
Okay.
The orange line. Annie, it's in the minutes. It's in the orange line, it's rotten.
We'll conduct the listening session, and then we'll talk about the meeting design. Any questions before we get started? I'll turn it over to you.
Before we start, though, we got two groups. We have Red Cross back in the back. If you don't mind, they came to the high school the other day and talked. We have one member, I brought this round, registered in Perry County to be a part of the Red Cross. So if you're interested in that, they're back here. And then, what's the other one, Betsy? Operation Change. Betsy, what's the other thing I'm supposed to introduce?
Oh, Marty's got an announcement to make.
Hi, everyone. Um, we are working Operation Change. This Saturday, we're having a first pick call, it's kind of a town hall meeting. It's great if you can come, it's for late, 45 and older. It is, we're gonna be talking about the impact of stress, how to deal with arthritis, and how, I have to say, behavioral change in weight loss and health management. So, the meeting's gonna be coming on Thursday at the Bay of Stumble Building, that's the U.K. building in front of A.R.H., from 4:30 to about 6:30, and we're going to have a talk come up.
We're giving, like, prizes, lots of...
Free counseling and just, it's gonna be cool and stuff, really. So, let us know. Thank you.
And what...
You have your moments. Thank you. Yeah, and I have suppliers here for the Thursday night.
Anything else out there? One other thing, of what we changed, our city commissioners, we started at the first meeting this last night, well, last night, really. We're telling everything that we've tried to do, sort of positive for the town, and it takes about 37, but the trash trucks back on, they'll be around on your water bill, and what they is running and stuff, we got it back up and running, it's free to the public. We've got a project going, it's LKLP, and we're gonna have a pilot program this summer with public transportation from 6 o'clock in the morning to 6:00 in the evening, and it'd be like at a minimum cost, and we may have to have a phone rager for like $25 a month, whatever, for people that can't afford it. And then we've got the water, we've had about 20 meetings on water, on trying to fix the water problem that we have. That's our biggest problem in the city, and we've got, we've got a plan. We know, Scott just walked in, I think Scott is... Scott secured one interconnect, one section of the county, is the interconnect open?
Eighty.
Okay.
Not county line.
And that's gonna really help. We've written a grant for farmers markets, like a $100,000 grant, and if we get that, we can put it downtown by the Triangle, and it could be different purposes. And then, what was that, it was a $50,000 grant, it's called?
From Settler.
Settler.
It has a grant program, and we will be applying for that, and could receive up to as much as $50,000, and it will support and complement the project that's going on down there at the Triangle.
And then we had a meeting today, down in the amphitheater. Got most of the money secured to build a canopy over the, which is gonna be a permanent stage and stuff like that. And then, we had a group of kids here this week to the Housing Development Alliance, and anytime that they had downtime, they would come to the big and help paint and stuff. So, you need to go up there, they paint one of the bathrooms a day, and we fed them, the city fed them, I haven't paid for it yet. I thought that there was gonna be six or eight kids, it was four. And we went to Francis's diner, and it was $1,069. So, I haven't given the bill to their kids, so anybody wants... But I've got some donations, if anybody wants to help to feed those kids, really use it. But, this is a good thing. What we're trying to do, we got this grant for the strategic plan, and what we're trying to do, the ministers, myself, Derek, Carlos, Tony, well, everybody, we just wanna try to bring the energy back to the city. And we can't do that without your all's help. And at this time, we'll leave it to them. I'll wish you luck. We get out of the way.
Thank you, Mayor. I like your energy, I do, and I like the energy that we've seen the last couple of days. My name's Tad Long, this is my colleague Bobby Bryant, and so we'll be your facilitators for tonight, and we're the primary ones that will be working on developing the strategic plan for the city. So we're gonna do two things tonight. The first part of the meeting, which will be fairly short, we're gonna work at tables in teams, and we're gonna talk about, we want to listen and hear from you about the strengths, the weaknesses, the threats, the opportunities that exist for Hazard. We want to listen to what you have to say, and we want you to talk in table groups, and somebody to be the recorder at each table, and write them down, and then we'll share some of the ideas that you have. Then the second part is really the fun part, and it is the design session. And I'll go through the specific instructions, but essentially, you have a map, and you have about 70 or so pictures, and you have crayons, and you have ink pens and post-its. And so we want you to take what we've heard and show us what it looks like on the map. So some communities will say, "We need housing." Well, that's great, what kind of housing? What's it look like? Where would it go? Other folks will say, "We need parks, and we want zip lines," and, you know, that's what kids are really like that this afternoon. And so they drew where they would go. And so, it's a lot of fun, but it really helps us to visualize what you're telling us. Your future generations this afternoon created maps, and in my hand are their ideas, and there's a lot of them, and we're gonna use every single one of them. And we're expecting the same, there's a lot of pressure on you tonight, we're expecting you all to perform like they did this afternoon. And if we can do that, then I think that the future will be bright. So with that, I want to just immediately get started, and this is gonna be like speed dating. Have any of you ever heard about that? We're gonna see if we can find an idea that we like, and if we do, we'll keep, we don't, we'll move to the next one. Uh, so just to get everybody kind of loosened up and help you to understand, tell me some of the things, what do you value the most? What do you value the most about being in the city and living in the city or working in the city of Hazard? What do you like the best? What stands out? What do you value about the place? Well, that was a short date.
Call it out.
It's home.
It's home, thank you. What else?
Mountains.
The mountains, alright.
Uh, people are always friendly and helpful.
People are friendly and helpful, what else?
We work well together.
Work well together.
The people.
The people, excellent. Anything else?
Small-town atmosphere.
Small-town atmosphere. What else?
Access to education.
Access to education, good. What else do you value about this place?
Access to healthcare.
Access to healthcare.
We've talked about this several times, the people in Hazard are so giving, they're very generous.
People are giving and generous in Hazard. Excellent, good, thank you. What else?
Outdoor recreation.
Outdoor recreation.
The fact that we have a city government, we are so lucky, I mean, we have resources, we have a police department, we have a fire department, we're getting our road to Mac. I mean, to me, our city government is vital, and we have a county government now that works with us.
Okay?
That's a big plus.
Well, thank y'all for showing up. History? History, good. What else?
Direction of the high school, the Hazard's games, and sports government of Hazard's system.
Okay, thank you. Good, what else? Oh, by the way, Bobby is typing as you're speaking, because we want everybody to see, first of all, and second of all, if we don't get it right, we want you to tell us, so we can correct it right then. And we'll publish this sometime this week, we'll get the web link out to the city, so anyway...
A strong ministerial association.
Pardon me?
A strong ministerial association.
Strong ministerial association, what else? Good, thank you.
We live in a beautiful place.
Live in a beautiful place. I was gonna say, I love the mountains, especially when the leaves are in the spring and in the fall, when they're changing colors.
It's when there's leaves.
When there's leaves. Very civic-minded town.
We have all the students too.
Okay, what else?
Thursdays on the Triangle.
Pardon me?
Thursdays on the Triangle.
Thursdays on the Triangle. What else?
Black goat.
Culture?
Black goat, black goat festival.
Black goat festival.
Yes.
So, there is a, there's a group of young people through, like, Vista and AmeriCorps and Teach for America, um, that are coming here, and they're investing themselves, um, they're making a difference, and sometimes they're staying. And it's a completely different thought process than what, you know, some of the older people in the room might have, and so it's good.
Yeah, what she said, the new... The young people who are getting involved in the city now are making a big difference.
I actually like Teach for America. We got great teachers there, but we've been lucky enough, we got great teachers, one of them stayed as a commissioner now.
There was a third one, you said Vista and AmeriCorps? No, you got it, Teach for America. There, I'm probably leaving something, well, they got Appalachian Fellows too, so we want to record that as well.
Alright, so now you see how this works, we ask a question, and then y'all give us your feedback. So now we're going to just work at tables. So I'm gonna ask a question, y'all will work for about five minutes or so, the recorder jot everything down. Now it's important that you write everything down, because we're just gonna do one round, but we'll take all the notes, okay? Alright, so here we go, here's my question. Thank you, Mayor. Alright, here's the question. Alright. We're gonna do a talk in here in just a second. What are the strengths of the city of Hazard? That's not what you value, that's not what you like, but what are the strengths of this city? What are the things that make it strong? What are the strengths of Hazard? You've got about five minutes or so, write them down, and then we'll go around from table to table. Thank you. You can talk now. Alright, we're on call time. We need you to pick out one thing from your list and share it, alright? We'll go from table to table. Share one thing. Here we go. Here we go. So, yes, make sure you record everybody's response, because we're gonna take those up, and we will use all of them, but we're just gonna go around one time, one round, right here.
City's infrastructure.
City's infrastructure, thank you. Next table. Y'all got one back there? Who?
Education.
Education, back table.
Um, we have a strong nonprofit community.
Strong nonprofit community, this table, right from the back to the back.
Strong community support.
Strong community support, here. Food. Food.
It will expand in a diverse, for a diverse economic...
Okay. Alright, good. This table.
Resiliency.
Resiliency, alright, next?
The full range of services as far as, like, the police, fire, water...
Okay, hold on, hold on.
He said full range of services as far as, like, the police, fire, water, gas.
Okay, thank you. Back table?
Outdoor recreation.
Outdoor recreation, excellent. That's how this is gonna work. Those are great answers, that gets us off to a good start. Next question. What are the weaknesses or challenges in the community that might keep it from prospering? Alright. We're on call time. We're gonna roll through this now, so you know, you gotta get the ideas out there and move them, move them along. So, the weaknesses, we want one from each table, once again, and I'm gonna go in with ours, we're gonna start over here this time.
Lack of organized recreation.
Lack of organized recreation, next table.
Capitalism.
Capitalism, back table.
What's like a capital?
Lack of transportation.
Capitalism. Lack of transportation, this table.
Dilapidated areas.
Dilapidated areas, this table.
Uh, we felt, so I'm gonna just talk, and then you riddle this down to a phrase. They mentioned, like, groups working separately instead of together, and we mentioned silos, and we talked about nonprofit groups, and then churches, and we wish they would work more closely together.
Okay, thank you. This table. Okay, yeah, Bobby's... Bobby's fingers are kind of in the brain.
Okay, working silos, churches, and nonprofits work together. Is that fair?
She's asking you.
Is that fair? Is this okay? I know what y'all mean. Okay, thank you, good.
Okay, so hours of apathy, needing to get more of the community involved.
Okay, apathy, needing to get people involved. This table?
Jobs, lack of and loss of.
Lack of and lo, lack of and loss of jobs. Next table.
Uh, adequate housing.
Adequate housing, back to the back.
Weak tax base.
Weak tax base, alright, good. Alright, next question. What are the opportunities that Hazard has that they, that the leadership and the community need to exploit or turn loose? What are the opportunities that are here as you're looking out next year, five years, 10 years? What's the opportunities for the city of Hazard? Alright. Opportunities. This time, I'm gonna start at the back, way over in the back. Are you all ready? An opportunity.
We need to empower our youth and provide opportunities for youth to come back.
Thank you. We need to empower the youth and get opportunities for youth to come back. Next table, right here.
Um, adventure tourism, such as kayaking, ATV trail, shooting range, and all kinds of...
Adventure tourism, thank you. This table.
Uh, we put downtown.
Downtown's an opportunity, okay? This table.
Good job, good job.
Uh, we're gonna say drug court.
Drug court.
We should go downtown, and we raise you the fucking structure.
Market structure, great. Back table.
Arts and entertainment.
Arts and entertainment, over here.
Healthcare.
Healthcare, this table.
Um, housing development.
Housing development, this table.
Expand the college to a four-year university.
Expand the college to a four-year university, very good, thank you very much, those are all great. And now, the final question for this round, Alex for a thousand. What are the threats? And when I say threats, what are the things that threaten the quality of life or, you know, could seriously hurt the community if you don't take care of it? And so, talk about those for a few minutes and write it down, and people will make that one. What are the threats to the quality of life for the community itself that we need to address? Last question. What are the threats to the community? And we will start on the left-hand side here at the back, if that's okay?
Us?
Yes.
Uh, I think one of the threats is stereotypes.
Guess what, stereotypes?
Stereotypes.
Gotcha, thank you. This table.
Our, uh, workforce.
Workforce, okay, here.
Um, I think one of the biggest threats we face is the drug problem.
Okay, this table.
Children's.
Read the last one.
The last one. We need to shift the mindset of more members of our community to seek unlimited opportunities.
Good, next table.
They just shared ours, so we'll say, we'll say young people leading.
Okay, young people leading, back table.
Lack of cultural diversity.
Lack of cultural diversity, this table over here, thank you.
The issue of downtown development, the fact that because we're on the river, we face massive, um, challenges in order to rebuild.
Okay, next table.
I have gone all over the touch.
Okay, that's fair. What about the next table?
I'm gonna mix two of ours, uh, lack of good-paying jobs and lack of tradespeople, and training for tradespeople.
Okay, very good. Give each other a round of applause, those are really... Now, the next piece is the fun piece, and I love it. This is called a design session. So you have maps, you have pictures, you have little architect docs, you have notepads, you have post-its and ink pens, I'm gonna show you. You have pictures. First of all, there's, I think, 70-some pictures, 50-some, I don't have any of those, a bunch of pictures. There, you fold them and break them. So there's four machines, alright? Now wait, wait. You don't have to use every single picture. Find the ones that pertain to what you want to see in your city, and once you find that, and you know where it goes on the map, you take one of these little dots. Watch this. You know what happens, somebody says, "Now, watch this." Hold the bear! We want an entrance sign, y'all, Hazard, this means right here, right here, that's where I want it, okay?
And he cannot get your pictures to stick there, paper right on the picture of what he wants to be or where he wants to be.
How is color-coded, hundred, something? Oh, hand me a crayon, somebody hand me a crayon. You can't on this map, it's up. I want you, well, don't try, but I want you to draw right on the map.
Hey, guys, let's get the map.
Draw on the map, right on the map. That's telling us what you see, alright? So have at it, you've got the little, good little time here, talk about it, get your pictures on the map, draw on the map. Because I don't know what there is about that list I didn't learn to do that. Alright, here we go, so listen, listen up, listen up. So, first of all, I appreciate how hard you've worked, Bobby and I have been around, we've compared notes, and then, y'all have been working hard, and a lot of good ideas. I don't want anyone to feel like that just because you're not getting to present your 33 ideas, that we're not listening. We are, we're gonna take all of it with us, and I promise, we're gonna consider everything that you've done, it's just that in the interest of time and, you know, respecting everybody, that we want you to share a couple, so that everybody can rejoice in your thinking, okay? If I let this table go and do all their ideas, by the time we get over this table, there ain't gonna be many left. So we want everybody to share glory, alright? Here we go. So saying that, y'all get the first two.
Well, we got 15, oh.
We got, so everybody can hear, okay?
One thing that we really focused on, and we thought would bring a lot more interest back to Hazard, is revitalizing downtown as a whole.
Okay.
So a new downtown...
New downtown.
And then our second, our second idea was influx, we're bringing in technology-based businesses as well as education to expand what the young people want.
Okay, bringing in technology, expanding, uh, the technic-based...
Technology.
Technology and technology for young people.
I thought we get this.
Yeah, that's right. Alright, is that fair?
It's good.
Okay. I'm gonna do this different, this table, right here. Are you all ready? Are you ready?
Yes, um, so...
Okay, listen.
So our big thing is we want a train stop, because there is going to be a passenger train that's gonna go from somewhere to somewhere, and stop in Hazard, but maybe Lexington, Yawberg, maybe Vail, something like that. But it's gonna stop in Hazard, and people are gonna be able to get on and get off and do stuff.
That's a vision.
Um, so then the next thing is, Annie says that we need to have old people housing. So we, so we need to have, like, multifamily, there needs to be better multifamily, and maybe something that is geared around an aging population.
Okay, excellent. Alright, thank you all so much. This table over here.
We're technically assisted living.
Assisted living. Oh, so, listen, listen. By the way, we met out at the Senior Citizens Center today with some seniors, and we had a ball, first of all. And I will say that patio homes and assisted living places and independent living for senior citizens is a huge thing to them, and that is something that's important, it seems like across the United States, that's a growing trend, so that is an excellent one, and that will definitely be in the plan. What's your other idea?
Uh, we wanna do something where people can actually visit Ellicottville again.
They visit the city of Ellicottville again. Alright, thank you. Alright, next table, right here, Chief?
Talked about, talked about a lot of different ideas, but mostly entertainment type stuff other than what's already been mentioned, you know, like ATV, uh, wilderness adventure type stuff, could be horses, motorcycles, anything like that.
Alright.
Could be opportunities for trail stores and things like in that nature. Talked about a motorsports park, uh, racetrack, uh, drag strip, that kind of stuff, different ideas.
Okay, excellent, thank you. This table.
Alright, um... Home school.
Two.
Picking back in on the housing, um, we also talked about, um, retirement village.
Okay.
Of because, you know, when you think about people retiring, were they retired, were they go to Florida, you know? This is a good place to retire.
This is a good place to retire, too.
Okay.
Also downtown, um, uh, some of the money from stores, uh, small business, uh, kind of like a mini Gatlinburg.
Okay, thank you very much, this table.
Way back?
No, this middle one here, yeah.
There's lots of things that, how the people have said so far, but the one thing that we think is different is, we look at zoo development and both our family housing, specifically in the LA's area, clear, uh, Maloney's, that, that area seems to be not used for anything, and so that seems to be, pretty, pretty thought of as a little bit.
Say they're close to Maloney's, is that right?
Right, LA's.
Okay.
And that's sort of the worst right now.
Wait on CDVG. CDVG.
Alright, thank you, uh, let's see, where are we, back tables? Um, two that haven't been mentioned, one thing we talked about is that, a lot of times, you're, we're kinda down in the mountains, and we forget, and we don't get up on top, so finding a place where we can have a park with a view, and really remind everybody that this is really, I was up on Gorman Ridge, and it's, the place is spectacular when you get up top. And then, Ben had this stellar idea about taking the old fifteen bridge, uh, not tearing it down, and turning it into an elevated pedestrian park. Um, so again, you kinda bring in the river, and so we, we really emphasize the scenic beauty. The, the one right at the park that they're gonna tear down when they build the new fifteen, but don't tear it down, turn it into a park. And you can hang out, you'd be above the river, it could also help connect the hospital. That's right, that's true, somebody needs to talk this thing, alright. That kind of idea, I mean, things are in the works, so somebody needs to get talking, you wanna do that, I mean, it's a cool idea, very cool. Alright, this table right here. Can you give your ideas, sir, why? Okay, go ahead.
More advanced with the technology, that would be, with internet, but also maybe something like back, backlands.
Okay. Alright, thank you, and last, but certainly not least, our biggest contributors, the back table.
We looked at a lot of revenue generating type things, um, such as small business, home business, uh, low-tech, um, shop local, those kinds of things, because we've realized that we're gonna have, need the tax base to do a lot of the other projects, and so, if we don't have the tax base, we're kind of stuck. And we've been stuck for a while, we don't wanna stay.
That's a, that's a good note to wrap up on. Alright, so, now people want to know what's gonna happen, so, if you would please, here's how you can help us. The pictures that you use that are on your map, leave them, the ones that you did not use, take them off of the map, that's the first thing. The next thing that you can do to help us is put all the crayons back in the box, okay? The third thing that you can do to help us, take your notes, if you have handwritten notes from your listing session and all that, and put them in the middle of the map. And we will roll them up and take them home. Hold on, hold on just a second, hold on. Alright, so, that is a big help to us, now, when we get home, we're gonna take all this stuff back with us, and we generally just sit down for a day or two, and we go through all the ideas and make sure that we've got all the information gathered, and that we've considered every angle, and then we begin talking and thinking. Which ones of these really resonate, which ones of these might be low-hanging fruit, which one of these could make a big impact over the next few years? What makes the most sense for Hazard, not what makes the most sense for Hayden, or Hyphal, or Jack, what makes the most sense for this place? And we want to develop a plan that is specific to the city of Hazard, and that's what we're gonna do. And we'll be back in here about halfway through, and we'll have a meeting, and we're gonna say, here, here's where we're going, did we miss anything? And then, we're gonna say, what's your part in it, and the mayor's gonna wanna know, what are you gonna do to help? So, be thinking about it, we think we need help, and not just the people in this room, I understand most people in this room help on just about everything come and go. We need to double this volunteer base, that's the goal, volunteer base doubled, alright. You had an idea, what did you want to share?
Me and Wanda's been working on something for a couple of years now, and we've got a great resource, Gene Rich. We're trying to start the Kentucky Folk Music Festival here in Hazard, is what we're trying to do, we're trying to get.
Cool, thank you, alright, thank you again.
One other thing, we have to adjourn the meeting and all that stuff, it's not a normal meeting, but before we do, on March the thirtieth, Mark, stand up and just tell them, this is really about the drone port thing, just, I mean, you know more about it than me, I got this right.
Okay, I think y'all can hear me, right? Y'all hear me, okay, um, for you all, for all of you that may or may not know about the drone port, I'd like to invite you on the twenty-ninth and thirtieth to HCTC. Uh, we have the first national drone conference, uh, here in Hazard. Now, a lot of people may wonder what that is, but, uh, look at the people that we've attracted, and I think this is gonna be very important, and a lot of people have been helping with this, I could point at so many familiar faces in the room. But we have, uh, then, one of the inventors with SOCOM, Special Operations, that will be here, that works with small drones. We have a gentleman that works on cybersecurity for the military drones, uh, wrote the book on it, it's on Amazon, you'll see, it's, uh, that guy's gonna be here, we have the Department of Energy, we have, uh, FBI, this is all about drones. Uh, we've actually got three people that are involved in the CIA, and one of them formerly was, I think he still is, uh, he's gonna be teaching some of the classes on Friday. We also have a police officer named Barry Moore that's flying in from Corpus Christi, Texas, and he's one of the first police officers to ever use drones, uh, and created a drone organization for police officers in cities to be able to utilize those. Uh, we have one of the main people with FEMA out of Florida that's coming up to help teach. Um, we've also got a former military drone pilot, one of the first twenty-four in the United States Army, that was a drone pilot that will be here. And then, that's just on Friday, on Saturday, we have a lady from England, her name's, uh, Gail Ornstein, and she is a lady journalist from England, and she has flown in twenty-one countries of conflict, including Syria and Iraq, over ISIS. Uh, she was, when I talked to her the other day, she was just leaving Chad, going into Nigeria, uh, she's a lady, she'll be coming to us. Uh, she taught, she taught last week, uh, at Cambridge University, she's a, she's a real great speaker. Uh, then we have, uh, we're not certain yet, uh, about the congressman, but we do know that, uh, the governor will be here, um, talking about aerospace, and we also have the United States Secretary of Transportation, Secretary Wang Chao is our keynote speaker. So, we've brought in the president's cabinet, we've got a lot of people that are coming to our town for things that we've been doing for two and a half years here, uh, to garner good positive national attention to our area, so what I'd like to do, I've got some information here, I'd like to invite you all to turn out. We'd love to have you all, uh, on Friday and Saturday, if you have any interest in drones, in economic development, and seeing technology take root here, uh, there's a multitude of people you can talk to about this, the, uh, Robert Millions, um, Betsy, um, the mayor, there's a multitude of people here that have been helping with this quite a lot, so, if you have any questions, please, uh, please feel free to contact me or ask them, I'm gonna leave my cards and information here, and, uh, Mayor, I appreciate you giving me the time.
Thanks, and one other thing, Jake, tell them about a vision, what's your meeting, Jake? You need more people?
Uh, yeah, we envision Hazard, it is a downtown revitalization, uh, community action group, that meets at City Hall every second Tuesday at five-thirty, and, you know.
Every third.
Don't listen to me. Uh, you can follow us on Facebook, Envision Hazard, um, you can also sign up for our mailing list, um, just in the, um, message, Envision Hazard Facebook, or anybody on the steering committee, me, Lee Mann, Margaret Keith, and Lauren Brown, and also Corky Caldwell, who's over there, who's my snap. Yeah, so, if you all, also, you can just tell me right now, or any of us right now, and we can add you to the mailing list, but yeah, follow us on Facebook, um, and we're posted on all of the meetings. Am I missing anything, anyone?
We got one other announcement.
If you enjoyed this work, we do it once a month, so please come out.
I'd like to, uh, call your attention to that, on hazardhappenings.com slash prelude, uh, within the week, there will be a resource document that sort of takes you to, one document's an illustrated conversation about this very issue downtown revitalization in Hazard, so you'll see yourself and friends in it, and a lot of great ideas that are perfect complement of this kind of conversation. That should be up by next Monday.
At this time, Tony, this is the city matter, Tony, episode.
We appreciate everybody coming out, of course, and at this time, I'd like to ask Mr. Portland to give us a minute.
Thank you, Father, we're most grateful to be here as a community and as individuals for they, and hope that we learn things that'll help us in the future. We all need to be more optimistic, work together each day like we have today, and we're out here today not being optimistic, you know, help us all to be community and environment optimistic about everything we do each day. We all love the city Hazard, and we all need to contribute to the city Hazard in some way, that was in the vision of this community, this rest of our name, amen.
Thank y'all very much, need a motion to this. First and second, thank you.